I would like to call the September 8th, 2022 Regular Board Meeting to order at 6:01 PM. Tucker Green will be giving our invocation. Please rise.
You went by your head. Let us pray. Your heavenly Father, we thank you for the day you've given us, Lord. We ask that you can give us wisdom and guidance as we go throughout this meeting to go in the way you'd see fit, Lord. You would ask, Lord, that you be with every family here, every home here. Protect our staff, protect our students, and keep them safe, and give our staff the tools and resources they need to help our students be successful this school year. Lord, we also ask that you be with the family. Chair Finley noted in her opening remarks, be with them and give them comfort in the days ahead. All these things we ask in your holy name. Amen.
Thank you. Remain standing, please. Mr. Steve Smith will give pledge allegiance.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you very much. The next item is the approval of the agenda. Mr. Young, do you have any amendments to the agenda?
Do I have a motion, Chair?
Do I have a motion to approve the agenda as presented?
I'll make the motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Smith. Do I hear a second?
I'll say.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The agenda has been approved. Next item on the agenda is Superintendent Reports.
Thank you, Madam Chair. We will start this evening with a little something different. Dr. Newcomb, President of Chat Uche Tech, would like to come and address the board and talk to us a little bit about the relationship that we have with Chat Tech. Dr. Newcomb, thanks for coming tonight.
Good evening.
Good evening. Thanks for coming.
I'm delighted to be here. I'm so far delighted, I'd say I'm tickled to be here. It's wonderful. And I already know that I should be doing more of this. I appreciate y'all's having me here tonight and your hospitality. Chair Finley, other members of the board, Superintendent Young, Principal Martin, Daniel Bell, other faculty and staff of Pickens School, especially Pickens High School. I'm here to brag tonight about y'all.
Well, that's a wonderful trip of events. We just keep on talking.
Can I repeat? I'm here to brag about y'all.
Thank you. Thank you.
I was telling the superintendent I was 20 years on City Council in Sperna. And we discovered that sometimes people don't come as quick as they ought to to be bragging. So I'm here to be bragging. We've got a great relationship with Pickens School at Chat Uche Tech. In fact, I'm here to tell you that I'm going to read some talking points that not one of these stats isn't a good stat. We have over 100, by my latest count...oh, by the way, I'm here with Heather Pans, my executive VP Operations. Thank you, Heather, for being here. I ask your indulgence for that. We have over 100 students. We have 107 students by my latest count today from Pickens High School attending Chat Tech, either coming to the campus online, coming to a different campus, or us coming to Pickens High School. In the modern times, that's a record. And I want to say very quickly before I go through these other points, that occurs because, in my humble observations, because folks at the top have said, "This would be a good thing," and have blessed it. And so when the superintendent, when I was bragging at the Chamber Breakfast a month or six weeks, whatever it was ago, time is probably right now, about this relationship, and I said something to the superintendent that I'd love to come and speak to y'all. And he said, "Well, we're able to do what we're able to do," because he's got good folks working on it, and he's got the support of the school board to do it. It doesn't just happen. So I want to say that. We've got 107 Pickens High School students. Some are taking one class, which we're appreciative of. Some have taken as many as five, which is a full-time load. That's quite a commitment from a high school student. They're taking just about anything you can imagine. Auto tech, welding, cosmetology, computer information systems, management, arts, communication, comp, English. We've got 60 in an English class. In English class. Math, we've got 40 in math classes. Economics, history, political science, psychology, sociology, allied health, and even a certified nurse assisting program, nurse assistant program. Folks, that is a wide spectrum of students in different classes, hands-on machinery, or core stuff, or health programs. That is robust. As I said, online or at one of the campuses or with the high school. At the high school, it's a section of English 1101, which is college-level English. It's taught by Kristy Jones Abgood, a credentialed instructor of the high school, who's credentialed in such a way that we have her teaching college-level English 1101. So the students, these students are getting credit with y'all and credit towards a college credential at the same time by the same course. Welding remains the program and course area where we have the most enrollment on the campus itself. We have 19 students taking the first two welding courses. 19 students taking the first two welding courses, plus some others in some of the higher-level welding courses. These students will complete a couple of more technical certificates in welding and towards their diplomas in welding, if they continue on to do that, and graduate from high school with a credential. All these students, no matter what they are, if they're taking something to earn a certificate, a diploma or a degree, will get a grad...will go to our graduation as well as your graduation. In fact, I'll tell you, last spring, Daniel Bell was there with...how many students was it, Daniel?
Nine students.
And what subject did he?
Welding, air conditioning, automotive technology.
They were walking across the state getting a credential from us the same semester they were getting a credential from y'all. It's just not any better than that. It's just something we can all be proud of. That's also true in auto tech, in cosmetology, and CNA. I do want to say some appreciations in addition to those. We appreciate being in the Pickens High School. The ability to use space there to provide courses that complement what you are offering and what we can add to that. We appreciate that. We also, of course, thank students that they come to one of our...to the Atlas and campus, to another campus, including online. We appreciate the fact that y'all have a bus running from the high school to the campus that facilitates this. We want to continue to find ways to get any students that you have that are interested in a college-level course to get credit with y'all and credit with us, no matter where it is, when it is, how it is. We're there. And I'm here to express my thank you to y'all for causing this to happen and to all the people I've started by mentioning to...to say thank you for building a foundation in the past on this and for continuing in this. That I mentioned in modern-day times, it's a record. Thank you. You have any questions, Amy?
We're just grateful for all that you do for them. It's really...it's great. I'm a former teacher, and I would tell my students, Chat Tech is the way for you to go. You don't have to spend a lot of money and go way far away. We have the resources in our backyard.
And they can accomplish so much no matter what their area of interest is at that affordable price.
Yes.
Locally or online, wherever it works. Why wouldn't we advocate to any student, look at that as a resource, something that you can get going on? Ms. Finley, I appreciate you saying that. And with y'all's permission, I will be back to be brag another time as well. All right?
We'd like to thank Daniel for all the effort he puts into this, because I don't think many people realize how hard he works to get these children in that college.
That's true.
That would be a sentiment that we share. And I recognize that there has to be a support from the leadership, which is y'all, of course, and the superintendent and the principal. But we know Daniel is familiar with us, and he's familiar with Pickens High. And that's ...and he has the energy and the disposition to get it done. He cares about every student. As you started the meeting saying, "Let's think about the children." And we notice that. And of course, you do as well. Thank you.
Dr. Newcomb, come back anytime.
Thank you.
You're welcome.
Thank you, Dr. Newcomb. And a perfect segue. For our second report is Ms. Chris Parker, our CTAE Director, is going to do her annual report to the board. Ms. Parker?
Good evening, Mr. Young, and Madam Chair, and other board members. Thank you for allowing me to present tonight. I'm mainly here to talk about our local plan as it relates to the federal and state grants that we've been awarded and what activities we plan to utilize those funds for. So there are some mandated activities that go along with these federal and state grants, mainly to strengthen academic and technical skills for our students, to provide experience in and understanding of different industries as they relate to our programs, to expand the use of technology throughout all of the CTAE programs in Pickens County, to deliver relevant professional development for all of our instructors, and to evaluate how well the needs of special populations are being met through these programs. Also, we need to initiate, improve, and expand, and modernize the CTA programs that we have, provide services and activities of sufficient size, scope, and quality. And perfect segue, as Mr. Young said, link secondary career and technical education to our post-secondary career and technical education, and to prepare special populations to be self-sufficient. This is just a one-year funding application that we're asking you to consider. Among these grants, on the federal side, we have been awarded through the Perkins Five, Perkins Plus Grant for fiscal year '23, $10,640. This grant's designed to supplement the resources of local school systems in rural areas like our own. This funding would help us with end-of-pathway assessment materials, specifically purchasing the actual tests, the administration of the end-of-pathway assessments, and study materials to prepare students for these assessments. The Perkins Program Improvement Grant that we've been awarded for fiscal year '23 is in the amount of $42,720. This grant must be budgeted for activities to improve and enhance CTA programs, not just maintain them as they are and to run them. We have to improve them and enhance them. The plan is to provide...use this funding to provide for equipment and machinery, to provide professional development for our teachers, and travel for professional development activities. In the agriculture, this, I think, begins our state grants. Agriculture Extended Day and Extended Year Grants. For Extended Day, fiscal year '23, we've been awarded $22,308. This grant provides salaries for one additional work hour per day for agriculture classroom teachers to complete their program of work. And then the Extended Year Grant, in the amount of $18,786, provides salary for 40 additional workdays for agriculture classroom teachers to complete their program of work activities. We've been awarded the Agriculture Young Farmer Grant in the amount of $5,000. For this particular grant, the system agrees that the funds allocated have to be budgeted only for instructor travel and 70% of the cost of instructor's salary and benefits. And the remaining 30% of the cost of the instructor's salary and benefits has to be provided from QBE local funds or other appropriate funding. The CTA Extended Day Grant for all other teachers that are not in the agriculture programs, we've been awarded a total of $12,328. Specifically, this year, we have four programs who have instructors who have approved program of work, and that includes our CTI, our Career Technical Instruction Program, the FBLA, CTSO, Skills USA, and HOSA. And the CTA Supervision Grant, we've been awarded for fiscal year '23, $14,333. This grant's used to provide leadership for the CTA programs that are operating under an approved local plan. And all of that money goes directly toward the CTA director's salary. Just to give you a little bit of information that's current, the different programs that we offer at the high school this year include agriculture, construction, audio/video technology, business management and administration, education and training, health science and sports medicine, hospitality and tourism, information technology, STEM, CTI, work-based learning and youth apprenticeship, and dual enrollment. And just some basic data that I thought you might be interested in having. This year, we have 12 instructors in the high school CTAE programs. We offer a total of nine different career clusters for a total of 14 pathways. This school year, we're offering 38 different CTAE classes. And the fall semester, we have 949 students enrolled in CTAE courses. For the spring, we have 1,026 students currently enrolled. In work-based learning and youth apprenticeship, we have 43 individual students that we're serving through that program. And we had, last school year for fiscal year '22, we had a total of 331 pathway completers, which means that students completed a series of three courses in one pathway. And of those pathway completers, we had 170 students earn a credential of value. And that is an interchangeable term that we use for end-of-pathway completers who pass that assessment at the end of the We wanted to say a sincere thank you for continuing to support our CTAE programs here in Pickens County. I wanted to share with you a commendation that I got yesterday from our regional director, who was complimenting the fact that we are able to offer such a wide variety of CTAE programs for a system our size. So thank you for what you do for CTAE.
You're welcome.
Do you have any questions for me?
Thank you, Carissa. We all appreciate the support of the CTAE program.
Absolutely. I think it's very important for these students to have these options and to have...for them to just see, this is a wide, bright world out there.
It definitely is.
And we're going to have...to be able to try out various things and just kind of find out where their gifts are.
Well, thank you for what you do to make that happen.
First, thank you. And it's great to see somebody with a CTAE background like you do, and my former homeroom teacher is now here as CTAE teacher. So I am curious, how are you on work-based learning? I think it's 42 students. What are some of the deals that you're being able to place those students in? Are you...do you feel like you have more partners wanting more students than you do students wanting to work?
We definitely are in a time where we have more need from employers than students to provide the work. I've never seen it this way before, and it's a trend that we talk about across the state. It's not just here in Pickens County, and it's not just in Georgia. It just...the employers cannot find and they can't keep good employees. So we definitely have people in our community who are reaching out to us, who would love to have work-based learning students come and work with them. So placements are not something that are a problem for us at this moment in time. And we have students who are placed in business and industry throughout our community and in surrounding communities in pretty much every pathway that we offer. I can't think of one that we don't have. Maybe engineering and technology, that one, we don't have a large number in that specific pathway for work-based learning students, but the others. And we have people reach out to us very frequently looking for those students. And we would like to provide more to them. It's just a matter of finding those students that we can match up with those employers.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you, Carissa.
Thank you.
CTAE is in good hands. All right, Madam Chair, our next report will come to us from our CFO, Ms. Amy Smith. Amy, let's hear a financial update.
Thank you, Superintendent Young. What we have for you to review tonight and consider for approval is our FY '23 tentatively-approved budget. The revenue collected through August of 2022 is 1.62% of the tentatively-approved budgeted revenue, and the expenditures are 11.2%. And our FY '23 consolidation of funds, Fund 150, we have expenditures through the end of August reflected in this report, but we have done no transfers at this time. We are still waiting for a few federal approvals before we start to move those monies. As always, I'm going to report that this school system has absolutely no debt. Our lost in capital outlay revenue for the month of August was $733,379.51. Our interest earned for the month is $1,756.16. And our expenditures were $533,457.44. That brings our month-end balance to $8,770, $770,88.57. And our special revenue funds, and I always remind you that we have to spend these funds before we are able to collect the revenue on them. So we only have a 1.06% collection of our budgeted revenue, and we have expended 15.28% of our budgeted expenditures. Do y'all have any questions on that report? I also wanted to see if everyone received by email or by mail your FY '21 audit report. Everybody did? Good. No findings. We had a great report. Always happy to report that. And we're on to the next audit preparation timeframe. So, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you, Amy. Our last Superintendent Report will be operations and construction. Mr. Gillum is, I think, will be with us this evening. So Mr. Wallace is going to take care of that. He's also going to go ahead and address the action items that the board will be acting on later in the agenda. Mr. Wallace?
Thank you, Superintendent Young, Madam Chair, board members. To start out with maintenance as our first item. Like to give a shout-out to you guys there who do whatever we ask each day for our schools and our facilities, make sure they're operating effectively. We never know what the call is going to bring or the email that we get. So they're always ready to jump in and do whatever's asked, and we really appreciate that. Also, I wanted to mention that two of our guys just today were on bus routes. And so they jump in and help any way that we need. Our PHS Ag facility, I've been on that site a couple times this week, and it's moving right along. Going to be an incredible facility, some interior doors, painting, things like that, garage doors getting hung. So a lot of the interior work, awnings were going on earlier in the week. They got this wrapped up. So it's coming right along and right on schedule. May even get it done a little ahead of schedule if all goes well. The next one I want to talk about under the same topic is we're starting this school year with a monthly award to a school that has the cleanest school, and these are checked out by folks in our district and kind of graded. And I'd like to recognize Hill City Elementary and the ABM crew there, Koshia Martin, Amanda Cox, and Anita Cook for being the recipient this month, or for the month of August. So I know we'll get some friendly competition between the principals. They like to compete. So I'm proud of those ladies out at Hill City for keeping that place sharp. So under the same heading, I want to go ahead and mention the capital outlay topic. It'll be later in the board agenda tonight. And this is in reference to the renovation, the modifications that will be taking place if you guys approve this item later for Pickens High School. And I'm pretty familiar with this one. I got to go through the process with Mr. Gillum this year with this and the state. And we are earning through the state about almost $4 million for this project. Not a big chunk of what we're going to need to do it, but it helps substantially. And it's just what we've earned over the years. And of course, has to be allocated certain things, certain items, as we look at a renovation, much like we did with Junior High a couple years back. So that's something we want to be trying to get going here in the next couple of years. And we had to go ahead and put that request in or that application in. And so of course, be glad to answer any questions about that. Estimated project costs at this point, of course, a little ways out before. A lot of it can happen between now and then, but somewhere between $17 million to $20 million to renovate that school in the same fashion we did the Junior High. So any questions about that capital outlay renovation modification portion? Next, I'll move on to transportation. I appreciate the hard work of our drivers, monitors, office folks, and shop personnel. Takes a team effort every day to cover the routes, and everything has to go on to make this happen. It's quite an operation. I've been in the district for 15 years, and there's a lot I didn't realize that went on to make that happen. So kudos to those folks for working tirelessly to make sure things get done like they're supposed to. And three of our four office staff were driving buses this afternoon, along with two of our three mechanics were driving buses. So they're willing to chip in and everything, covering ballgames and trips. So trying to make sure everything gets covered. They're doing a great job, and I appreciate all of them. Next item, new bus purchase request. You'll have a request later on in the agenda for the purchase of new passenger buses. And we're looking to purchase six 72-passenger and one 48-passenger bus, and we have quotes included in your packet. There was a significant difference between the two manufacturers. And so we are looking to purchase Thomas buses this year. And we have to go through this process pretty early because it's taken about a year to get them. So we're trying to be on top of this so we can have them in hand by next year. The good news, really good news this year is the state is giving us a substantial amount of money to help us out with this this year. And the way this works is we have to purchase the buses, you know, and order them, purchase them once they're delivered. We pay in full, and the state reimburses us for that. But I've talked to Ms. Smith, and she's...everything's on tap for that to happen right like it's supposed to. And we're excited for that to be in front of you tonight as we continue to keep our fleet young and under 10 years old with all air-conditioned buses, with all of the proper safety equipment on and cameras and everything we need to make sure to keep everybody safe. So just to give you an idea, the difference in cost on a 72-passenger, between the two bids was around $15,000 a bus, and between the 48-passengers was about $24,000 a bus. So we would be basically putting in about $229,000 for what would be seven total buses. And so that's a pretty good deal for us, especially when they cost around $120,000, $130,000 a bus. So great deal for us. We'd love for you to consider that tonight and be glad to take any questions about the purchase of these buses.
This is the same manufacturer we just...for the buses we got this year?
Yes, we went with Thomas this year, expecting delivery, I think, in November. Wasn't in this department for that process. But yes, it will...we primarily have Bluebirds, but Thomas is offering to me, from what I've looked at and learned about them now, an equal product and for quite a bit cheaper. And so looking forward to seeing how they perform. And our shop guys have been through, you know, some of the trainings and stuff to see what, you know, parts are different, what we got to stock, and those kind of things to make sure we're ready to go. But it's not that much different in the manufacturer. A lot of both of them out on the road. So yeah, we're excited. Any other questions about the bus purchase?
We're all in favor of saving money.
All right. Last but not least, food and service. I'd like to commend Beth and her staff. They're doing an outstanding job, being shorthanded here at the beginning, like a lot of areas. But they rally around each other, and Beth will be the first one to jump in and help and get her hands dirty. So hard-working folks that take care of our kids every day, really appreciative of all they do. And go have lunch with them one day. I'm sure they'd love to have you. all they do, and go, go have lunch with them one day, I'm sure they'll be happy. Any questions I can answer?
I wanted to congratulate Ms. Halco and the Hill City crew, and I'm glad we did get that competition going. That was an idea that was born out of a board workshop to try to incentivize cleanliness in our schools. I did want to confirm, I think we allocated some money to give them a gift certificate or something, is that correct?
Yeah, what, what are we giving them, Amy?
We're actually, we will actually pay them an additional amount.
Oh, great, okay, great.
We're, we're working on the method that we'll do. Stacy and I have been talking about that, we're getting that worked out, so we can do it quickly.
That'd be great. And I, I don't want to speak for everybody, but I think we even talked about it in, at the time and in the future, I think we'd love, if they wanted to spend their second Thursday even of the month with us, we'd love to have them here in person and recommend it.
We checked on that.
They weren't interested?
Why am I going to say that?
I, I wondered that, if that may have been the case. And then the other thing, is October still target date for Ag facility? I know you mentioned on the schedule, and I, I think that was the date I heard, is that right?
I think, of course, their turnover, their turnover date is December for our CO to us. And like I said, most of the work now is inside, so you don't have to really worry about weather as much. I think, I think we're going to be fine, barring no problems. I mean, we've run into a few things along the way, like some bushings for the power hookup with a M- Cola. They've been great to work with and trying to help us out with that if they had a shortage themselves. So, had a few snags like that, but I don't see a whole lot holding us back at this point. I think everything will be right on target. But I want to say December 20th was the original drop date, but I could be wrong on that, because I've come in the middle of this project, but it's, it's really shaping up, and it is an unreal facility. So, I'm excited to get down there and officially dedicate it soon. Any other questions?
And that would be a grand to me, and I hope a lot of our community will come out and see that benefit when it's dedicated.
Yes, sir.
All right. Thank y'all very much. Ms. Wallace? Sir? Madam Chair, conclude Superintendent reports.
All right. Yes, sir. All right, now we're into action items. And the first one is approval of personnel. Do I have a motion to approve the Personnel Action Report as presented?
I'll make that motion.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. The next action item is approval of financial reports. Do I have a motion to approve the financial reports that Ms. Smith presented?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Green. Do I hear a second?
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is 5-0, the motion passes unanimously. The final item on our action items is, no, it's not the final item, is the final approval of the 2022 milage rate. Do I have a motion for the final approval of the 2022 milage rate at 12.90 mils as presented?
I'll make that motion.
You can't all get credit for it, guys.
I'll make your motion.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Ms. Aaron Holland makes the motion.
I'll second.
And Tucker Green makes the second. Okay. Any further discussion?
I just want to point out the lowest milage rate that we have had on record, as far back as we have records available to this, is that correct?
The, I've checked back to 1999, and it was beyond 1999 since our rate has been slow.
Thank you. I would say that's quite, quite an accomplishment. So, I would say the school system, a big kudos to Ms. Smith, but also to everybody who was careful with their money and all of that. I think we've done well. Take care of the money and be able to roll it back to the milage rate that's, as Tommy pointed out, the lowest it's been since 1999, last we've looked, checked records. All in favor? 12.90, thank you very much. Vote is 5-0, the new milage rate passes unanimously. All right, the next item is the approval of the FY '23 budget. Do I have a motion for the final approval of the FY '23 budget as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrill.
Second.
Second from Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion?
What is the final number on there?
For general fund. Final budgeted amount for general fund is $50,840,270.
Thank you. Is there any other discussion or questions? All in favor? The vote is 5-0, the motion passes unanimously. The next item is the request for approval of the FY '23 CTAE local plan. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '23 CTAE local plan presented by Ms. Parker?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Holland.
I'll second, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. Next item is a request for approval of the FY '24 capital outlay project application. Do I have a motion to approve the FY '24 capital outlay project application as presented by Superintendent Young?
I'll make that motion.
Okay. Thank you, Mr. Green.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion?
Just wanted to remind everybody, this is what Mr. Wallace was telling about this interior renovation, Pickens High School, complete renovation, law fixtures, flooring, walls, ceiling light fixture, plumbing fixtures, it's, it's very drastic and much needed.
Yes, sir. Absolutely. All in favor? 5-0, motion passes. Okay. Approval to purchase school buses. Do I have a motion to approve the purchase of six 72-passenger buses and one 48-passenger bus with a lift from Thomas built buses for a total cost of $846,521?
So moved.
Okay, Mr. Smith, thank you.
I'll second.
Mr. Green, thank you for the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0, and the motion passes unanimously. The next item is approval of the FY '23 local board training plan.
I can, Madam Chair. Each year, the board is required to submit its training schedule for the upcoming year. While this is a required submission, this training schedule is flexible and can be adjusted by the board in the next calendar year if need be. Therefore, I'm going to ask for approval of this training schedule so that Martha can get the paperwork submitted to the state by the September 30th deadline. She's getting nervous, the deadline is fast approaching. It's, it's a, it's a technicality in that we have to submit the training plan, but the board in January, February, as they see fit, can modify that. But we do have to have one in place by the 30th.
Do I have a motion to approve the FY '23 local board training plan as presented?
I'll make that motion, Madam Chair.
Okay, thank you, Mr. Gartrill.
I'll second.
Thank you, Mr. Holland. Is there any further discussion?
I, I don't even have to ask this, because I know Martha will take care of it, but I won't ask anyway. Do we, have we been notified about the new board training for the new members yet?
Well, I mean, they're, they have all the options, and we've not talked with them, but they have the booklet with all the options, some of it's virtual.
I was, I was just curious if GSBA had announced that yet?
Well, they've got some of their trainings out there, their, you know, catalog and different things, but, and then there's the conferences in the summer and the winter.
I'm sure they get notified somehow. I got notified somehow. Somehow you and I ended up down in the middle of the sample. We did.
Yes.
And found your way home.
We did, by our way.
Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0, and the motion passes unanimously. Thank you. Next item is a request for revision of Policy BCBI, which is Public Participation in Board Meetings.
I can, Madam Chair. Yet again, I'm coming to the board to ask tentative approval of a change to the wording of one of our policies. This change involves Policy BCBI, Public Participation in Board Meetings, and is due to changes made to Code Section 20-2-58, which were made during the '22 session of the General Assembly. These changes to Code Section require us to adopt rules of conduct for public meetings. We have followed guidance from both GSBA, as well as our Board Attorney, in changing the wording of our policy, and I'm asking for tentative approval this evening of that new wording.
Do I have a motion to approve the requested revisions to Policy BCBI, Public Participation in Board Meetings as presented?
I'll make the motion.
I'll second.
Hang on just a moment. Upon approval, this revised policy will be placed out for public review until our next regular monthly board meeting. Draft policies may be viewed from the homepage of Pickens County Schools eBoard site. All right, the motion was made by Mr. Smith. And a second from Mr. Gartrill. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0. Thank you. The next item is the approval of out-of-state overnight field trip for Pickens High School Band, Chorus, and Drama Team. Do I have a motion to approve the request from Pickens High School for the Band, Chorus, and Drama Team to travel to Pigeon Forge, Tennessee on March 23rd, 2023, to perform at Dollywood?
I'll make that motion.
All right, Mr. Holland, thank you very much.
Second.
Second from Mr. Smith. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? The vote is 5-0, passes unanimously. Item K is the approval of minutes. Do I have a motion to approve the minutes from the August 11th, 2022 call board meeting, which was held at 5:00 p.m., the August 11th, 2022 regular board meeting, which was held at 6:00 p.m., the August 26th, 2022 call board meeting at 1:00 p.m., and the August 26th, 2022 call board meeting, which was held at 1:10 p.m. as presented?
I'll make that motion.
All right. Thank you, Mr. Green.
Second.
Thank you, Mr. Smith, for the second. Is there any further discussion? All in favor? Vote is 5-0. Mr. Young, have we received any requests for public participation at this board meeting?
We have not, Madam Chair.
All right, thank you. The next item is board comments. Does anyone have anything they would like to say?
Madam Chair, if you indulge me, I'd like to share a story with everybody.
We would love to hear it.
When I started school, first grade, I had the same bus driver until I was old enough to drive myself. He was a very caring, kind man, helpful children, and we remained friends until we died of a cancer some years ago. My daughter rides a bus every day. We still have those kind of caring and compassionate bus drivers, and I'd like to give them a round of applause.
Thank you, Mr. Gartrill. Do I have a motion to adjourn this meeting?
So moved.
Thank you, Mr. Smith.
Second.
Second from Mr. Gartrill. Any further discussion? All in favor? All right, the vote is 5-0, we are adjourned at 6:47 p.m.